Evening. Welcome to North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting for October 31st, 2018, our Halloween edition. And I would ask everyone to stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would ask Trustee Dunlap to read the mission statement, please.
You don't even have it. The mission for North Idaho College is that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. And we do have a quorum tonight. Trustee Banducci was at our earlier board workshop on capital planning, and he had another commitment. But the four of us are here. And that takes us to our review of the minutes. Board, if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes, if there are any changes, if none, I will accept them as written. Okay? Thank you. And no one has signed up for public comment. They're all trick-or-treating without us. And that moves us to our celebrating success Cardinal Learning Commons. Amy Page, welcome.
So Lita's gonna...
Lita, thank you.
Chair Wood, Board of Trustee members, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce Amy tonight to talk about the Cardinal Learning Center. And that name just only probably encompasses a portion of the work that has been done to really help our students get foundationally secure in their studies here at North Idaho College. Amy came to us just about a year and a half ago. And we gave her a very big agenda to complete in terms of what we expected to prepare our students to be successful in their college studies here at the college. So she has worked really hard with the team to reform what we used to call, I can't even remember what we used to call it, the Skills, College Skills Center, to make it, one, more user-friendly to students, to, secondly, to engage them in a higher level of learning and to truly prepare them for all of their studies here at the college, but especially focusing on math. And they've also created a math center, which we have been desiring for about three or four years. And so they renovated the area for the College Skills Center. I'm not going to still completely steal their thunder. But the work that they have done and what they have accomplished in this short amount of time is truly amazing. So without further ado, I'd like to have Amy share with you the remarkable work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Amy.
Well, Lita didn't steal my thunder here, but she kind of did do the Hubble telescope view of all the changes that we've had over there. This leading slide here is one of the new Cardinal Learning Commons logos that we have outside of the old College Skills Center. So I did want to talk about the differences and what academic supports we had before compared to what we have now. On the left-hand side of this slide, you can see that the old College Skills Center, we focused mainly on peer tutoring. We had a peer tutor coordinator. And the peer tutoring we did was students tutored other students. So on the right-hand side, you can see one of the different changes is we actually have an academic support coordinator who's focusing on all the academic supports available for these students at the college, not just peer tutoring. We've got a re-envisioned approach to academic support and professional development. It's not just tutoring. We also are doing supplemental instruction or identifying those key courses that have high DW or with failure rates to provide those academic supports. We, like Lita mentioned, we have incorporated a math education center, and we have a math education center coordinator for that as well. The thing that's so special about the Cardinal Learning Commons, it is really a true collaboration between divisions and departments across campus. That's something we've been needing for a long time. And we traded the traditional remedial curriculum that was in there before, like the Math 0 and 5 or the traditional reading courses and transitions courses. And we really have adopted a new curriculum focusing on academic success and retention. So I did talk about academic tutoring. What we used to have was just scheduled tutoring. Students could come and schedule two hours per subject to receive tutoring. Now we have unlimited hours and unlimited subjects. And we have both scheduled and drop-in tutoring. Instead of just having peer tutors, we actually have professional staff tutors as well. We have people with bachelor's degrees and master's degrees. We have faculty tutoring as well. So we've shifted away from just peers tutoring peers, but actual professionals doing those tutoring. We're able to do more data collection now with a WC online tool that we're using to track those students and to see what they've received tutoring in and provide reports to faculty members so they know which students have come to receive those supports. Partnering with night at the library, just this past semester, we did the midterm study night at the library, and we had 996 visits at the library that night or that whole entire day compared to the 556 that we normally have. We served 190 students in the spring semester just for midterm and study nights. So those two nights combined was 190 students, and we had 205 just at midterms this semester. So I mean, you can see the involvement that we've had with students across campus and between divisions and departments working together. One of the things we're wanting to do in the spring is to pilot some supplemental instruction courses for those courses that are typically high enrollment courses, which also have high failure rates or lower scoring reports. So three of the courses we're going to focus on is Math 108, 123, and Math 143, just to pilot in the spring. And I would love to come back and let you know how that's going. Lita did say that we started a math education center. This is just one picture of the center, so you can get an idea of the physical space. We do have nine computers in there that students can work on in their Alex course product, and I'll talk about what that is here shortly. The partnering, campus partnerships and collaborations, we just recently did a nursing workshop where we were focusing on the math that students need on their nursing exams to help strengthen that. And of the students that came, nine of those students received 100% on the exam. Three received a 95% on the exam, and the students that didn't come actually scored 75% or lower. So we're really trying to focus on what are those math supports that we need. So we did that with nursing. We're looking at doing that with physics, also doing that with chemistry. So we basically are looking at the math needs of the students because the largest predictor of students not returning to college the very next semester is if they failed that very initial first math course. And so that's what our focus, we really wanted to focus on in there with the Math Ed Center. Another thing that we're doing in there is accelerating those students into their college-level math courses as quickly as we can. So one of the ways that we're doing that is through Math 090, which is College Preparatory Math Course. What we've done in that math course is combined three of the remedial classes. There's a three-credit Math 015, a three-credit Math 025, and a four-credit Math 108 course. What this Alex course product allows us to do is students take a diagnostic test the very first day of class. And as you can see on that pie chart there, students are given credit for what they already know, the content mastery that they have. So instead of going into a traditional math course and starting at chapter one, from page one, and going through the whole entire book, students are actually able to enter in where their deficiencies are. So this particular student, as you can see, they already have most of their yellow pie done. There's a little bit of gray in the outside areas there. So those are some areas that they probably need to strengthen. And what this program does is allow us to look at those areas and help build upon those and complete their pie. So the progress in Math 090, right there on the left, that picture is one of our new math collaboration rooms that we have. We've set it up in a modular style. So instructors are able to group the students based on where they are. So then structure actually does a little bit more work in this environment because they have various lesson plans because they're really teaching to groups of students based on where they are. We've got 164 students currently enrolled in this Math 090 course. And as of right now, well, yesterday, 10:30, 25% of those students have already, they have the potential of completing all three of those remedial classes. So they basically are taking 10 credits worth of math in four credits because they're already given credit for things that they already know. So by taking Math 090, rather than starting in Math 015, they've just went through the whole remedial sequence in one course. So of these 41 students that are going to be able to do that by the end of the semester, we've saved $849 per student. So tuition saved by these students getting into their college placement math by taking this one Math 090 course just for this semester in nine sections, we saved the students $34,000 in tuition.
That's amazing.
And so I would love to be able to come back after we have several semesters of this under our belt and compare it to the traditional models that we have because I know the state is wanting us to get those students to their college-level math within the very first year. And this is the way that we're able to do that. Another thing that we've done in the Cardinal Learning Commons is look at first-year experience courses. National Center for Educational Statistics says that 71% of students don't graduate from a two-year college within three years. I mean, that only means like 29% are completing in three years at a two-year degree or at a two-year college. So what we wanted to do is, in front of you, I had Chris pass these books out. This book was designed, Joe Cusio is actual author of Designing Your Community College Experience and Beyond, Kerry Carlson, one of the instructors of the course, and I helped adapt this book specifically for North Idaho College students. So as you go through, you can see that there's particular things in there just for NIC students. So what we wanted to do is orient these students, as soon as they get to NIC, to be able to figure out what plan are you going to be on? Using guided pathways, what math pathway do you need to take? Let's see, how long will it take you to complete your college course or college career? And so this actual book and course gives them the skills and knowledge needed for success at North Idaho College. It connects them with the campus resources. One thing that we have seen is when we connected them with the Campus Rec Center across campus and the library, after we made those initial visits, they've actually tracked students visiting those places more because we were able to take students there and orient them. So we're helping them establish near-term and long-term personal, academic, and career goals. And one thing about this course is it is a Gem Seven Wellness component. It's a two-credit course. And so they're actually able to take this course, get oriented to NIC, but also get their Gem Seven Wellness component as well. Another course we have is Designing Your Life and Career, the CLC 102. That course is based off of a book called Designing Your Life out of Stanford University. We know that students, 80% of college students don't know what major to choose when they start college, 80%. So this course actually says, hey, what are your interests? What's your background? What do you think that you would like to do? Let's see if this is a good path for you to be on. So we do look at that design thinking and the growth mindset, help them have self-management, figure out their personal life and career path. So 75% of students change their major at least once. So if we can help them figure out what their major is going to be that very first semester, we can help them complete a lot quicker than for them to change their minds of what their major is going to be. And 30%, 36% of adults who actually graduated post-secondary with a degree say that they wish they would have gone to school to do something else. So that's over a third of the people in the jobs that they have now say, man, I really wish I would have done something else. So this course really helps those students figure out what it is that they do want to do.
And is that a two-credit course, too?
That is a one-credit course. So whenever we put those, that two-credit course and that one-credit course together, they do get that three-credit Gem Seven Wellness course. So some of the things we want to focus on moving forward is add additional courses to support student leadership. I think it's very important. We have a lot of student leaders here on campus through ASNC, through various clubs. And I think it would be important for them to really get the leadership courses that they could even transfer on to a four-year institution that says, hey, I've got these leadership courses underneath my belt, and I do want to be a leader in the community one day. So we really want to focus on those student leadership, more on career planning as well. We would like to take these first-year experience courses and not have them be just courses, but really create a true campus-wide first-year experience for all students, and that's really engaging all faculty and staff across campus. We want to increase faculty engagement in the Cardinal Learning Commons, even get more faculty tutors in there, supplemental instruction pieces, and provide alternative pathways for students to get into those college-level math classes. And I couldn't do what we do in the Cardinal Learning Commons without the faculty and staff that we have. We absolutely do have a stellar team. Like Lita said, I only started 15 months ago, and over half of those people are new hires as well. So to do this much movement that we've done in less than a year, I mean, I hired four of those people just in July, and we've done this much change. So I get super excited talking about it. And I just gave you kind of like a Hubble telescope bird's eye view of it, but I'd love to go into more detail of any of these or even come back to talk more about the math progressions, to talk about the first-year experiences, what we're doing with tutoring and supplemental instruction. But we're pretty excited. So if you get a chance to see any of those people, just tell them that you heard about all the great things that they're doing over there. And I'm sure they'd love to hear that.
Absolutely. Board questions? Joe?
Dr. Page, thank you, and congratulations to you and your staff for the remarkable work that you're doing. The efforts that contribute to student persistence is oftentimes either underappreciated or overlooked. And so this is invaluable work, particularly when you put it in the context of the amount of savings that students reap from accelerated math and not having to, and receiving credit for what they already know. So, thank you.
Yes. Incredible. Trustee Howard?
It sounds like you've got a diamond in the rough that you're polishing up, and it really has a lot of promise to it. It's pretty impressive. One of the things that is unclear to me anyway, and you may have said this, but I didn't catch it, is how do you get students into this program, huh? How do you, how do you make sure that they get diverted off of another path and into the program and determine the need for them to be in this program?
To be in the math program specifically, that piece, or in?
Any of the offerings that you have through the learning program.
Well, one thing the campus is looking at is an early alert system. We're looking on technology to alert us of those students that struggle. A lot of times, we get referrals from instructors that, hey, I've got a student that's really struggling in the course. They didn't do well on their very first exam. Is there something that you can do to help? Students can go online at www.nic.edu/clc, and we have our tutoring out there. So it's open to any student that wants to come. We do have faculty referring students over. We do have advisors that's worked with students. Once those midterm grades come out, they've been identified that, hey, I think this student really could, you know, benefit from the support that you have over there. As far as the math particular piece goes, if I can jump back here, how they get placed in the Math 015, 025, or 108 is based on an Alex score. So that's based on a placement score. Traditionally, previously to, prior to April of 2017, we used the COMPAS for placement. We've now used to move to the Alex course or PPL, which is Preparation, Practice, and Learning modules. And so we've moved there. So the Alex score is something that's read into the system. So if students are between a seven and a 13, they're placed in Math 0 and 5. If they're between a 14 and a 29, they're placed in the Math 025. And then between 30 and a 45, they go into 108. But what's special about 090 is we will take all of those students from seven to 45 as their Alex score, and they're placed in there. So that is placed by placement scores. And we're looking at alternative ways to do that. In the past, students have taken the SAT just one time, so we have those scores. With Alex, what you're able to do is these students come in and they take this initial test. And the test tells the students, hey, you scored here. But it also sets up a tutoring module for them, so they're able to practice. And NIC is allowing students to take this Alex placement test five times. So what we're planning to do, starting at the end of this semester and moving forward, is to look at those students who are sitting on the bubble. So if we look at the Alex scores again, I might have a student that has an Alex score of a 27 or a 28. They're right on the top of Math 025, which they really could get into a Math 123 course, which could be their college-level course that they need. If they are so close and are within two to three percentage points of actually getting to that next course, the data suggests that any student that spends three hours working in the Alex PPL, they can increase their rate by 18%. So really, after they take this placement, it's set up, and the college pays $20 for the student to take this placement test. But these students can use these placement modules to actually get ahead and place into that college-level math class without ever taking a math course. And that's something that we offer through the Math Education Center, too. We're all about looking at students where they are, where they want to be, and really talking, getting to know those students to figure out what the right path is for them. It might be Math 090, but you might have a student that isn't familiar with computers, very uncomfortable, and I still would like to have a traditional classroom. I know I'm behind in math, but I want to start at chapter one. Is that still okay? Absolutely. We want to give the students the choices that make sense to them, but tell them about all the options that they do have.
Is this the kind of program where you get people in throughout the year? I mean, they may be doing fine in coursework for a month or two or three, and then they start to have problems with something. Is there a way, other than just checking the grades at the end of semester?
That's something that we're working on with the math department now. We've looked at trying to do some late-start courses as well. So if we have a student that's in a traditional course, and they're like, mm, I don't think this is for me. Is there a late-start course in the Math 090? Or we might have students in a Math 090, and they say, oh, this isn't for me. Is there a traditional course that I can go in? So that's what's so special about the Math Ed Center. It's not only sitting in our division, but we really work well with the math department to figure out, okay, what are we going to do with these students? What is the best path for them? But absolutely, we're open to looking at different ways for students. And the only way we know about what we need to do is to get that information from the students directly. So that's what helps guide everything that we do, is we talk to the students. We survey the students. We talk to the math faculty. We've read, you know, if students leave a course and the math faculty has asked them why they've left, we've taken that all into consideration.
Trustee Murray?
Good work. I'm wondering what your outreach to the Parker Center students looks like.
I'm glad you asked that. This fall was the first time that we've taught the Math 090 course. We've got nine sections of it. So we felt like we really wanted to get the kinks worked out, if you will, here on campus where we have the math support, where we have the Math Ed Center, where we have the math faculty to really work on those. We do have Brandon up in Sandpoint. He's looking at piloting possibly a section in the spring of Math 090 of what would this look like for distance-site students, for students that might be in the Silver Valley as well and want to take it online. What might that look like? We just wanted to make sure that we knew how at least one semester went here on campus before we did a full implementation or rollout into distance site and at the Parker Center.
Great. Well, Dr. Page, I have to tell you, when I see all these initiatives with guided pathways and then with this Career Learning Center, I'm envious of today's students. I really am. You just refuse to let them fail. And, you know, kudos to you and your team. I was a student. I don't know if there's probably a few that were like me. I'm guessing when I was getting my bachelor's, I left math for the last. Does anybody ever do that or just me? That's not the right thing to do. So I am just so impressed, first of all, with the data that you've collected, only 15 months in, and the success rates that you're seeing. I hope ASNC, Peter, I hope that ASNC would partner with them in promoting this Learning Center, do some kind of a fun math day or something, so everyone knows the resources. As much as they put out, whether it's in writing or online or whatever, you probably still need a little help promoting what you do.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, wonderful report, and we'd love to have you back.
Oh, great. I'd love to come back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that takes us on to constituent reports. And Peter Soderberg with ASNC, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Trustees, Dr. McLennan, guests. So to start, I would like to add to the Cardinal Learning Center. I've used it many times myself, and other students that I hear multiple times use it all the time. And it is an amazing resource, especially for math. I can't give it enough credit. It's helped so many students get through their math classes. So it is really amazing for us students. And partnership would be amazing to do with that as well. So this month, ASNC's been pretty busy. A lot of initiatives that we've started and events that we're doing, which I'm excited to report back on. So one of the things that's actually coming up in just two days, on Friday, we're going to be hosting a movie here at, in this room, Lake Coeur d'Alene of Incredibles 2. It's geared towards all families. It's like a family movie night. But something that I think is one of the coolest part about this movie night that we're doing is we're really focusing it on heroes. And the theme is find your hero here on campus. So we're going to be talking about all the different resources that are available to students. So we'll have flyers for the Cardinal Learning Center, for DSS, for the counseling, career advising. So we're just going to be trying to figure out different ways to plug in students with the resources. And so it's kind of like find your hero while watching an amazing movie. So if you guys are around and you want to see Incredibles 2, you're welcome to come by. It'll be amazing. And then next, we have Senator Sadie Francis has been, she's at the CTE Building at Parker. And she's been working on getting a student advisory board started over there. That's something that we became aware of earlier this year was when we were talking with students, we realized that we didn't have a lot of communication with the Parker Center and with the main campus here on ASNC. And they didn't know a lot about the resources that were offered. We didn't put on a lot of events for the Parker Center. And we realized that, and we wanted to find a way that we could kind of bridge that gap between the Parker Center and here on campus. And so we're creating this student advisory board, which will serve the purpose so they can let us know if there's any concerns that they have at the Parker Center, or if they would like to put on a certain event and they want ASNC support or stuff like that. It'll really be a way that we can engage with the students. ASNC will be at all those events. It'll be a monthly meeting. So we're really excited about that. Sadie's done a great job in marketing, and then we're hoping to get that rolled out here in the next couple of weeks. So I'll be excited to report on that, how that goes. Another resolution that passed this month was ASNC is in support in the process of making NIC a tobacco-free campus. In 2011, ASNC Senator Gonzalez started an initiative to make NIC a tobacco-free campus. But through the process, it turned from a policy into a guideline, which is what we have right now. ASNC is now wishing to continue where Senator Gonzalez finished with the progress she made into pushing it towards a policy now, instead of just a guideline. We want to start using our resources. And one resource that is available with us today is the Truth Initiative. They're a national nonprofit that works on raising awareness about the different harms of tobacco, but also works specifically with college institutions to make them tobacco-free. So they gave NIC a $20,000 grant to put, help make NIC a tobacco-free campus. So we'll be helping partner with them and the Tim Gerlitz from Student Health as we promote events and do that with them. We've already, I've been a part of that already, and we've had over 150 students say that they sign up with text messages saying that they support NIC becoming a tobacco-free campus. We've had a petition with over 30 students sign up saying that they will sign in petition of it, in support of it. And then we've hosted events and have reached out to 80 students so far with just coming to events. So it's been a really, so far, it's been a success in getting student input. And we're looking forward to presenting that to the next step and to call it Senate for a policy. The next thing, which is very relevant for right now, is elections coming up here on Tuesday. ASNC is trying to get students out to vote. But I have to give recognition to one certain club. The Second Student Alliance has been very, working really hard to make students sign up for voting. There is a couple times last week where they were, or two weeks ago, that they were all outside the sub, and everybody who walked by, they'd be like, have you registered to vote? And pretty much shooting down any excuse that somebody may have to not vote and showing that how easy it is to vote and giving every single option. So we're really excited to work with them and raise awareness about voting here in Coeur d'Alene. There was a statistic that just came out that you may have seen around campus, but only 3% of people in Cootney County ages 18 to 25 voted in the last election. So we're trying to change that. And this club started a great start, so we're hoping to piggyback off of them and continue with that. And then continuing on voting, I've had the opportunity to work with all the different colleges and universities in Idaho to create a higher ed report card for our legislators. So I've been working with the University of Idaho, Boise State, College of Southern Idaho, and College of Eastern Idaho, and Lewis and Clark and College of Idaho to create a report card for our representatives. We went through and weighted each bill that has to do with higher education, formatted in the same way that the NRA formats their report cards. And now we have a grade for each representative. I actually brought it with me today. It's 11 pages long, and it has every one of our representatives and districts. It's 11 pages long, and it has every one of our representatives and districts rated and with a letter grade beside it. We're distributing that right now all across the state of Idaho, so we're excited. That was one of the huge things that I've been working on the last couple of months, and it turned to be a huge success. So now we're just trying to get the information out to the public. So that sums up, in a nutshell, what ASNC has been up to.
You've been busy.
Yeah, we have, we've all.
Questions, trustee Murray?
Is there a link to that report card?
Yeah, I have a PDF I can send out if you'd like. We're going to be probably working with, we're sending this out to local newspapers and different ways that we can spread the news, but I would be happy to send a link where I can give you this, too.
Trustee Howard.
Send a link to Shannon. I'm kind of intrigued as to how you grade the various senators and representatives. Do you have questions that go out to all of the participants, and they grade them, or how do you do that?
So it was a process we went through with the help of University of Idaho. We went through and picked every bill that has to do with higher education. There was about 30 bills, and then we went through, each of us, and went through and weighted each bill from a one to five scale. So if we thought it was really important that, like, funding for higher education or certain areas, scholarships or something like that, that we deemed is really important, we'd rate it as a five. If we seemed that it wasn't very important, but it was still worthy of being rated, we'd rate it as a one. So if you voted for this, if you voted yes on it, you got five out of five points, and if you voted no, you got zero out of five points. And then that went through all the 30 bills, and then we came up with a percentage from that, using that formula.
Interesting.
And we, I'll send this out to Shannon, but it'll be, it talks about the whole process inside the packet.
Great.
Interesting. Trustee Dunlap, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Well, Peter, I think that's just fascinating. I'm curious, once you have that, do you also go send it to legislators?
We actually just finished it, we got off the last conference call this morning. So this is the, we just finished it today, so we haven't had a chance to reach out to any of the legislators about it. We sent it down to all the Boise Communications and stuff like that, so they'll be, it'll be heard about down there, and I don't know specifically if we'll be reaching out to each of the legislators about it.
Okay. Well, good work, and great work on the voting initiatives.
Yeah.
That's really, really awesome. I think, you know, all the veterans that are watching are going to appreciate all of your efforts.
I'm glad.
Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us on to staff assembly. Kathy Sparks.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and President McLennan. So staff assembly's been pretty busy. At our last meeting, we had President's Cabinet attend, and as a result of the survey that we conducted, we had some questions, and the President answered those questions. Then staff assembly had a time where we had a discussion, and as a result of our discussion, an ad hoc committee was formed to review policies and procedures. So we're going to, the ad hoc committee is met once, and we kind of looked through the policies and procedures that relate to staff, and we're going to start reviewing those and see if there's any that need to be updated and recommendations made, and then we'll send that on to the HR Advisory Committee to review, and then on to Senate. The staff assembly, the executive staff assembly, has started working on revising our constitution. Staff assembly also voted unanimously to present to you a resolution tonight that I'll read in just a moment, and they also voted unanimously to conduct another survey. We wanted to conduct a second survey that would include faculty, and we would work with the Office of Planning and Strategy and Effectiveness, and this will be a confidential survey that will include staff and faculty. And the goal is to identify things that we are doing well at NIC, and also specific areas that we might be able to focus on for improvement. And if Joe wants to come up, I'll read the resolution. Faculty and staff assemblies both worked on this resolution, and both voted unanimously to have it presented to the Board of Trustees. NIC staff and faculty assemblies recognize that Policy and Procedure 3.09, Evaluation of Administrators, have not been followed. While it is apparent that the administration has begun the process of investigating ways to reestablish a formative evaluation process for college administrators, it is important to recognize the urgent need for a timely and consistent evaluation process. Therefore, staff and faculty assemblies respectfully request that the administrators, as directed by Policy and Procedure 3.09, be evaluated during the fall 2018 term. Many employees campus-wide have indicated concerns over NIC's culture, including lack of transparency, distrust, declining morale, increasing workloads, leadership changes, and employment insecurity. Administrative evaluations are an important tool established to address these concerns, providing meaningful avenues for employee feedback while promoting communication among all employees at all levels. Evaluations build accountability, aid in transparency, and enhance trust, resulting in improved performance of all college employees, as outlined per the Policy 3.09 narrative as follows. The purpose of the formative evaluation for administrators is to continuously improve the quality of management at North Idaho College by assessing both the performance of administrators and the systems and processes in which they function. In order to achieve the goals and mission of the college, it is imperative that administrators be held to a high standard of leadership. Formative evaluations are tools for helping administrators improve not only their performance, but the work environment, and therefore the performance of subordinate employees. NIC staff and faculty assemblies expect these evaluations to be administered by an objective outside third-party vendor specializing in 360-degree evaluation processes. This perspective will guarantee confidentiality and promote confidence in the outcome of the process. We also expect that the staff assembly chair, faculty assembly chair, and HR Advisory Committee be directly involved in the selection of the vendor and the vendor's design of the evaluation process. Additionally, NIC staff and faculty assemblies expect that an overview of the evaluation's results be provided to both administrative leadership and all employees, detailing the role and effectiveness of each administrator in meeting our college's mission, vision, and values. We also expect the administration to utilize this feedback to work toward common leadership goals that will improve the quality of the work environment at NIC continuously, thus improving the performance of all employees and restoring and maintaining healthy relationships across campus. While NIC staff and faculty assemblies recognize the importance of Policy and Procedure 3.09, we also acknowledge that it was last revised in January 1997. Therefore, we request that in addition to the fall 2018 evaluation of administrators, an ad hoc committee be formed immediately to begin the process of evaluating, researching, and revising Policy and Procedure 3.09. The ad hoc committee will be comprised of faculty and staff members. Any requested revisions will be proposed through the College Senate approval process according to college policy and procedure. And I would like to say in addition to this, I'd like to thank Chris Martin, because I know he's done research on companies that do 360 evaluations, and he did include faculty and staff executive committees on the selection, and a selection has been made, and Chris says it's on target and scheduled for fall 2018. So now we just need our ad hoc committee for reviewing and revising Policy 3.09.
Okay. And Joe, if you would just stay as well as, board, any questions on the resolution that's been presented?
Well, I just had a couple, Kathy and Joe. I know at the last meeting, Dr. McLennan actually addressed this, talked about his desire to do a 360 evaluation and then a climate study, and so it sounds like it's all in the works, and you've, part of your resolution has already been accomplished. You've agreed on the vendor, and that it'll happen in 2018. I would like to see the resolution, so I could read it again, because I thought part of it said, and I could be mistaken, but I thought it said that you want the evaluations of the administrators to be distributed campus-wide.
Not the whole thing, but a summarization of, I'll read that to you.
Whether they're meeting their job description?
Right. Additionally, NIC staff and faculty assembly expect that an overview of the evaluation results be provided to both administrative leadership and all employees, detailing the role and effectiveness of each administrator in meeting our college mission, vision, and values.
All right. So at first blush, I would have some questions with that, and I would hope that we're working very closely with HR, because I know, as a former employee, having my evaluation sent out to everybody, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. It sounds to me like you're looking for themes.
Yes.
And so I just hope we're working with HR to make sure that's appropriate. But I would love to read the resolution, if the board could have a copy of it, whether if you want to get it to Shannon, and she could send it out to us.
Okay.
And thank you for coming forward and providing that to us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, Joe, did you want to go ahead and report? You want to stay up there and report?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Chair Wood, trustees, guests, thanks for allowing us to speak to you this evening. Faculty Assembly at our last meeting learned more about Cardinal Learning Commons. We had Leonard Lambert there explaining some of the resources and urging us to send students that direction. We also had a wonderful presentation from Phi Theta Kappa. The officers presented info on various projects that they're doing, and between hearing what ASNC is doing and seeing what these students with Phi Theta Kappa are doing, we've got a very dynamic student body. It was a real privilege to get to see what these students are doing and the positive impact they're having, not on the, just on the campus committee, but on the community at large. So we are really proud of the students. We got an advising update, and then the rest of the meeting was spent with the discussion of the joint resolution. We very much appreciated the staff assembly inviting faculty to be involved so that we could try to speak with a united voice.
See if I can pass.
So that was basically our month.
All right, great. Thank you. Board, any questions for Joe? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us on to Senate. Jessica Adams.
Good evening, Chair Wood, trustees, Dr. McLennan, President's Cabinet, colleagues, and guests. College Senate last met on Thursday, October 18th. Our first item of business was approving the first reading of the trustee emeritus policy. As you guys may have remembered, you guys put it on the President to work on a policy. He brought some best practices to College Senate. We created an ad hoc committee, and this policy that we first reviewed was a draft from that ad hoc committee. So we're really excited to look at that second draft, then send to the President, and on to you guys.
Oh, great.
Our second item of business related to the review of policy and procedures. So NIC currently doesn't have a review schedule of policies and procedures, and as you guys have seen from both faculty and staff assemblies, that's a concern of the regular review of policies and procedures. So we understand that the scope is huge and takes a tremendous amount of work, and has previously, in NIC history, has been placed on one individual or very few individuals, and that's a lot of work, especially when you're working with that many policies and procedures and with that many policy owners. So Senate has formed an ad hoc committee to do a few different things. One is to research how other institutions are handling a regular review of policies and procedures. They then want to look how NIC can intentionally review policies and procedures, and that may be writing a review schedule as a policy, and looking at a review board potentially that works along with Senate as in an advisory capacity of working with policy owners along the review schedule to make sure that those are being reviewed and passed on to Senate through the President and to the Board of Trustees. So our ad hoc committee is made up of two faculty members, two staff members, and a student from ASNC, and Diana Rens is also joining us. At her previous institution, she was a part of a policy and procedure review committee. Now, their college structure was different than ours, so it's not a cookie cutter fit, and that's not what we want to do. We want to make something that fits NIC. So we're bringing her in so we can learn about the success that her committee had, any pitfalls that they had, and we can really build something that will help NIC and improve us moving forward. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Oh, that's great. Board, any questions? Well, I would just comment that I previously was on the K-12 Board here at Coeur d'Alene School District, and I'll tell you, they have a very comprehensive program. Laura can talk, Laura would be a great asset for you on how reviewing policy and procedure all the time, and so you don't have to look far to not reinvent the wheel.
Exactly, and Michelle Lippert is a faculty member that is a part of it, and she has experience of other boards having a similar policy as well. So we're really wanting to reach out to other institutions as well as those resources that we have here, and not reinvent the wheel, but at the same time, not make something cookie cutter.
Sure. Well, good, great work.
Thank you.
Thanks for your report.
Thanks.
That takes us to our President's Report. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you. I'll start with, had the opportunity on October 11th to join the, at Gonzaga, their 20th anniversary for the Institute for Hate Studies. It's the first time I've actually been on that campus, but it was a, it was a really informative, heartwarming, depressing, in some ways, event to trace back the history. But what was really nice was the incredible partnership that that university's had with North Idaho College, as well as the Cootney County Task Force on Human Relations, and Chair Wood, a letter was read that you sent in for that event.
Yeah, I wish I could have been there.
Tony Stewart and Norm Giesel were there as well, and they highlighted some of the work that we're doing, incredible work that we're doing in collaboration with them with the Mostead Library for archiving the college's work and access for Gonzaga to use and to continue in their, in their future work around hate studies. Didn't really know what to expect, but it was, I'm glad we have that relationship with them, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to attend. This past month, a few weeks ago, a number of us attended the State Board of Education meeting in Lewiston, and you have a handout at your places. It's fairly detailed what the board, its final approval of outcomes based funding and as it will pertain to the community colleges. And if you can see, if you go all the way down, what this reflects is a one-year payback in by the colleges in year one. As we go out into year three, year two, year three or two, where it goes to 3%. Third year goes to 3%, and then it goes to 5%. We and the other colleges benefit significantly from this over the old EWA funding. This does replace line items, and so I don't, you know, we can answer some questions about this. There's a lot of unknowns. One of the unknowns is whether or not the legislature is actually going to fund this. It has a $16 million price tag to it, but it does supplant other funding that higher education would have received. And it builds on our base and provides us with flexibility in how that money comes in. Right now, with line items, we're basically taking money that we can use for general institutional purposes, and it goes to these dedicated activities that we're then locked into in perpetuity. So much more flexibility. We're going to be We're going to be, on Monday, I was also with the other three community college presidents in Boise, meeting with DFM, Department of Fiscal Management, Financial Management, Legislative Services, and others at the state board to look at how this upcoming session's going to unfold with the transition. You know, this has been 12 years since there's been a gubernatorial transition in, in Boise and there's a lot of folks scratching their head, kind of wondering how this is all going to go. They've got a lot of things in motion to manage that, but there's still a lot of uncertainty about what are the policy changes going to be. And there's a lot of uncertainty around this actual funding proposal right now, which means should this not move forward, we're then left in a, in a pretty troubling spot of what do we do then and how do we get line items back on the table? So it's kind of dynamic right now, but that's where that is. And any questions on this?
No, I think you, I have, I don't. Go ahead.
Maybe it's interpretation more than anything. When we look at this chart, for instance, under NIC, it says a column for data and one for allocation. What is the data? Is that student count or what?
That is the, you know, I don't, I actually don't know what that is.
That's apparently a factor in determining what our allocations are, what our allocation's going to be.
So the, all right, Chris, is where I get into trouble here.
No, that's right. I mean, you can, we can get that answer later on, but I, I just thought you could help me understand this chart.
That's the, that's the number of outcomes achieved in that particular category. So the historic data, if you look at the top row in year one equivalent, 30 more credits after degree completion. For that, for NIC in that year, it was 808 students, 880 of those completions.
No, it'd be 321?
Yes, I'm sorry, 321. And the same thing then, if you go down to the associate's degree, it's 554. And those are the payout values in the column next to those, multiplying out what the payout would be for that 554 students. And then you go on down with each of those, you see the Pell Eligible at 306 and the Bachelor, the Associate at 143 and so on. And then if you go on down, you can see the total amount of $908,000 with 154,000, that, that gets backed out in our actual, the amount that we would get in year one would be 754, a little over $754,000. Joe, trustee?
Down at the bottom, or towards the bottom, it says total at-risk funding and it's in red and it looks like a subtraction from the total outcomes-based funding. So what is the at-risk funding?
Yeah, so if you go down to the bottom, it's, it's also listed down there, the same number, $166,500. That's the, for lack of a better term, skin in the game. That's, that's money that would come out of our base to help fund the total allocation based on the historic data. So that's, it's roughly, it, it doesn't seem right, and I think there's an explanation for that, but it's roughly 1% of our, our state support.
Okay. And if I could, before you continue, I just want to editorialize a little bit here. At our last meeting, you may have noticed after our last meeting, there was editorial by the Coeur d'Alene Press talking about the lingo that we use and, and how we converse about the topics of education in our board meetings. And I thought actually it really wasn't a shot over the bow. It was a kind of a, hey, remember your audience. And so I responded to the editor and said, okay, you know, you're right. And a lot of times we don't, we don't think of our audience beyond this room or beyond these walls, but out, out in television land. So if we do adopt something like this in the future, and we don't know we will, but when we start talking about these kind of things in the future, if we could have a slide up prepared, and then you, just in your report, you did a very nice job of defining acronyms. We need to all be more aware of that and it took me a lot of years on this board to understand a lot of the acronyms. And Ken's always been good about pointing that out, that what are you talking about? So I want to be respectful to our audience and have all of us be cognizant of that.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. My purpose for sharing this with the board tonight, we probably could drill into this in more detail in the future, was just to show you the general direction that outcomes-based funding is going to take us vis-à-vis, or in relation to EWA funding. And EWA funding, the board enrollment workload adjustment funding, the board sunsetted that at the board meeting. So that's no longer an option for funding. They did however, run the calculation, and I don't have that for you tonight, but that calculation for NIC takes us in the negative direction fairly substantially. So part of the reason for sharing this with you tonight is we've, we've agreed with the other colleges and internally that we really do want to support this. And as we think about interactions with the legislature moving forward, and I will have for the board talking points to this, that, that we'll be able to go out and meet with folks in, in the community, but also with our legislative delegation to let them know what this means to North Idaho College and, and why we support it. So, so more to, more to follow on that as we get through our legislative agenda. I also just wanted to say, you might have seen this in the paper today, this, we've been getting a lot of support in the community. This is the recognizing NIC is the Entrepreneurial College of the Year by NACE.
That's wonderful.
We've been getting just a lot of recognition, appreciation, and support from the community for us not only receiving the award, but for the work we're doing that, that led to it. And so I don't know if you saw that, but I'll pass that around.
I did see that at home. Do you, do you all get the paper? You saw it? Okay, great. Nice work.
And then lastly, I'll just mention, three of you, I believe, are attending this Friday's event at the Parker Center with the Idaho Aerospace Alliance meeting. And this is going to be a great, great opportunity. This, this actually began in North Idaho and it was fostered by the Idaho Department of Labor. And it was a large part, this group's formation was a large part of what seeded some of the work that we're doing in aerospace in North Idaho. And we'll have a number of people involved in a panel discussion on the theme of attracting and keeping businesses in North Idaho. Again, that's in the Parker Center. And then lastly, lastly, I just want to share my appreciation for the work that staff assembly and, and also faculty assembly have done in, in helping us more quickly get to the idea, the, the resolution around administrative performance evaluations. As you said, we're already well on our way of, of doing that. I am concerned however, about an expectation that would be created that would identify specific administrators and, and thematic feedback for specific administrators, because that's, it's going to be a very difficult line to get to identifying what's actually in a performance evaluation. So Chris, do you want to just briefly talk about what the roll-up of that will look like?
President McLennan, trustees, the, the tool that we're looking at allows a thematic review of, of groups of people, but doesn't identify them individually. So as an example, PC could have a, a report that looks at themes from President's Cabinet as a whole, or from, an example, deans or division chairs as a whole group, but not looking at individuals within that, that group. So really thematically looking at how we operate as a team.
Right.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I think that's appropriate and I, I just, going beyond that really does violate some privacy. And so, and you have to really trust in the people that are in place to review those evaluations and supervise those people and not have that expectation that the whole campus is going to supervise people. So I, I think we can find a common ground on that topic. Trustee Howard.
Obviously, this whole subject matter requires maybe a lot more understanding from my part anyway, but I quickly looked at the policy and the policy talks about the results of any such evaluation going into the employees' employment jacket. Doesn't talk about any distribution beyond that. So if that, if that policy is going to change about it going beyond the employment jacket, that's something we need to address.
Okay. Was there another? Joe? No?
And Chair Wood and board members, I, I will be forming a ad hoc committee to review that policy. In addition to faculty and, and staff assembly members, it will also include folks from the administration, especially as that policy directly affects those, those members of the institution.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess on that point, we, we really haven't, we haven't responded to your resolution because we just got it. And when we get a chance to read it, maybe we can address it a little further at the next meeting. But we did hear you. We have heard your concerns about employee morale, and I think the president has heard your concerns. Give us some time to digest it and we can certainly continue to have the conversation. Okay, that takes us on to, trustee Murray is going to do the K-Tech report tonight.
I will. Trustee Banducci gave me his notes, so I'll read from those. First off, the budget, and we're talking about K-Tech budget, is in excellent condition. The three school districts contribute to that and their fall payments were received. NIC HVAC will be starting a spring semester using our full-time, NIC's full-time instructor. K-Tech will contract with NIC and there will be 14 students enrolled in that section. They'll all be the high school kids. Doug Anderson has conducted over 300 tours of Parker Center. I'm assuming that's this year, but that's a lot for just this year. So I don't know if it's over since it started, but that's a lot of tours. He also stated that LCS has visited both Parker and K-Tech and are using that as their model when they build their facility next to Lewiston High School. And just finally, K-Tech had a successful audit from Magnus and McHugh. So K-Tech's in good standing next to their neighbor.
That's great. Any questions for trustee Murray?
Oh.
Well, just a quick comment. I want to thank Lita and Dr. McLennan and Laura. I had sent an email this week. Mayor Woodmire had asked if the college, Parker Technical Center would host the next mayor's coalition meeting, which is in April of next year. And part of that was the idea that all these mayors would tour the facilities. And they immediately responded and they're helping set that up. So thank you for that. We, anytime that we can showcase our success, it's great. Laura?
May I chime in on one other tour that's coming up of the Parker Technical Education Center? So on November 11th, 12th, and 13th, we have the North Idaho Legislative Tour. And I actually just had a conference call today with some updates. We're expecting over 70 of our legislators from all across the state of Idaho to come for the three days and as well as entourage and other business leaders and other folks from across the state to enjoy North Idaho and get to experience all different businesses and industry and aspects of North Idaho. And one of the traditions we do as part of that legislative tour that comes through the area every few years is we'll be hosting or co-hosting with other higher ed institutions down here on the North Idaho campus on Sunday, November 11th, a brunch or welcoming brunch and breakfast. Wanted to highlight and dovetail to Doug Anderson's 300-plus tours and the tour you were just talking about of our facilities. We were able to add on to that tour, a stop at Parker Technical Education Center for the whole entire contingency that will be happening that Tuesday. So we're pretty excited about that to show off the building. So I just wanted to add on to the, another tour that will be happening up at that facility.
That's fantastic. Now, the brunch that we host, this, this is a business meeting they're holding, right?
Not the brunch. The brunch is just the starting welcome.
Okay.
We'll have the opportunity to highlight some of our successes. We'll be sharing with them the video that we produced about what we're doing with the entrepreneurial program and other aspects of Headland. The president will have the opportunity to speak and welcome, as well as folks representing Lewis and Clark State College and the University of Idaho as well. But it's a nice meet and greet, welcome, starting to their event. They will have a more business-style meeting dinner that evening, as well as when they'll go into caucus and do some of their work after the election process has just begun. And then the actual tour will be both the Monday and the Tuesday. And we'll make certain that we get all of the finalized details for you, and I'll get those to Shannon, so that if you want to jump in on any part of the tour or participate at all, you're of course always welcome.
Okay. And we're probably, if we can, we should attend the brunch?
That would be delightful.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That takes us to our old business, tab one, our second reading, our action item, compensation structure policy. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you, Chair Wood. This is the second reading and it is for action this evening. And I'll just read the, the background. Following the direction of the board during its review of the policy draft proposed by the board subcommittee members Brad Murray and Christie Wood at the November 2017 board meeting, the administration worked with members of the Compensation Policy Review Committee and an ad hoc committee of Senate to further refine the draft. The revised draft was returned to the full Senate for review and was, was approved in the spring of 2018. When the draft was returned to me and President's Council Cabinet, a minor change was proposed and agreed to by the chairs of the Compensation Policy Committee and the Senate Chair. The resulting draft is presented at this time for board consideration.
Okay. Thank you. And we have a recommendation for a motion. Board, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd move that we accept the compensation structure policy as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second to trustee Murray's?
I'll second that.
Second? All right. Discussion? No discussion? Well, we did talk about this quite a bit last time. So I think we have, in fact, we've talked about it a lot over several months. And so I think we are prepared at this point to vote. So I'd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I, trustee?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to thank you for sticking with this, all the hard work that went into this. Sometimes these topics can be very heavy, but you stuck with it and really appreciate the work by trustee Murray as well and all the trustees. So, thank you. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you. I, I just want to add that I appreciate that the board has allowed the, the compensation process to go forward as this policy intended, intends it to go in the future over the last two budget cycles. And so thank you for that. I, I think that's eased some of the concern, but I also am making eye contact with Erin Davis sitting in the back of the room there. And I just want to appreciate her and others, Josh Gettle and several other members from, you know, constituent groups and, and Senate for sticking with us on, on this and shepherding it through in a very collegial manner. Appreciate that very much.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to our new business, tab two, our first reading, action, Head Start Policy Council Bylaws and Application for Increased Duration. Beth Ann Fuller, welcome.
Thank you. Chair Wood, trustees, and guests, thank you for allowing me to come forward and present our annual board approval of the Policy Council bylaws and also our application for increased duration. So in, in the Head Start Policy Council bylaws, the background on that is in the Head Start Act and Performance Standards. The governing board does approve annually the policy council's bylaws or any changes. And beginning with that first attachment of their bylaws, there were very few changes, but on page four, they did request that we add that guests may attend our meetings of our policy council, but may be excluded from the room for any discussion or voted any time by the acting chair. So there was no, there, there was no information before about whether or not guests could attend our policy council, and they felt like that would be important to add. They also added that the chair shall make a reasonable attempt to notify unseated individuals if they were unseated by the actual policy council at that policy council meeting. And those were the two changes that they made on that page. And those were the two changes that they made on that page. And on to page eight, which they asked to add under a policy council representative being formally considered for employment with North Idaho College Headstart, that if they were going to be brought forward to the, with the hiring committee to the policy council meeting, that they be excluded from the room during the discussion and the vote of whether they become an employee. Their employee status terminates then their membership as a policy council representative. And just also adding, which was in there before, worded differently, except for parents who occasionally substitute as staff. And that is a new performance standard that we wanted to insert there. And other than that, there was just one grammatical piece, and policy council approved for your review on September 21st.
Okay, thank you. Board, any questions on the proposed changes to policy? This is, oh, go ahead, trustee Howard.
Thank you for the, for highlighting the changes. That makes it a lot easier for us to go through it.
Great.
I guess my question is, were these changes requested by the policy committee? Sometimes you bring changes in that are requested by some natural, some guidance of the national program.
These were by the policy council committee, you bet. All right. This, did you have a comment? Yep. This is first reading, so we'll see it back again next month, but I, I'm not hearing any questions from the board at this time. So.
We still have the application for increased duration to go through.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I am not on my mark at the moment. Go ahead, Beth Ann.
So in, in reference to the background behind the increased duration, the Office Headstart announced availability of 295 million nationwide to be awarded to increase the total annual hours of our high-quality early education services. For our Headstart, that would be our center-based services. The Office of Headstart is awarding these funds to grantees eligible under the, the program instruction that they put out. Funding's non-competitive, and we expect to have awards funded to eligible grantees pending a fundable application. These fund, these applications are due December 1st. So what would happen is the, the appropriations would become part of our grantees-based funding for FY 2020, but they, it would begin March 1st, 2019. So that would then, would start that. Services would not begin this school year, but we would begin planning and implementing space and, and employees and different things that we would need to be prepared. So NIC meets what they call condition five, so there's seven conditions in order of eligibility. So they wanted to make sure that we all understand that as they fund, so an example would be condition one is early Headstart center-based services, and down the line, we are number five, so if for any reason one through four gets funded and there is no additional funding, we may not be considered for funding even though we would be eligible. So what we propose to do is, is because we operate our centers with less than 45% of our center-based slots, meeting the new federal requirement of 1,020 hours by 2023, I think it is, we would like to increase our classroom spaces and classrooms at Lakeland, which is in Rafterham, at Sandpoint, and at Bonners Ferry at our Julian Boucher Center. So that would give us three more classrooms, running five days a week at six hours following the public school calendar. We had the approval of that and have been operating now for a year, and then into the beginning of this year with four classrooms that are in this model already, and we're seeing great success. We're seeing children meet more of their benchmarks, and there's school readiness goals, obviously, and we're really excited about our parent volunteers. With just this year alone, we already have 18 parent volunteers between those four classrooms wanting to spend time volunteering in class and, and helping us, so that is exciting. So in the attachment B, the details explain why we chose those three centers being based on our community assessment data, based on the most appropriate place to move forward with that as our next move to, to keep continuing to move toward 1,020 hours in all of our sites. So the staffing patterns and the reason that we're asking for $325,000 additional funding per year is for the, the positions that are created or the positions that are, are bumped to benefited. So at each of these three centers, it moves the assistant teacher, for example, from part-time to benefited. It moves the cook to benefited. So at these two rural sites, there will be two more benefited positions available in that community, which excites us. And then other staff that are already current staff would just receive more hours to be there more days and hours to serve those children. And it would be the, just all of the budget items are available on this program year budget that we would submit to show in this right column what the proposed duration funding pieces would be for that ongoing funding. What they're doing is, is if they fund us, they are going to come in and negotiate what they call startup funding. So we've identified about $150,000 worth of startup funding. Some of that would be to, to prepare a classroom at Sandpoint. For an example, we'd be adding an additional classroom and would need a full setup for a classroom there. And we would need some renovation to the buildings, so, and add some shading and, and some fencing and things to different centers. So once they fund it, then they would come and negotiate that with us for an additional $150,000 of startup.
It's quite the undertaking.
Yeah.
Board, questions for Beth Ann on this, this big proposed, big expansion proposal? But it definitely needed. Trustee Howard?
The, you're asking us to approve the application for this, these supplemental program hours. I guess my question is, is there any commitment in the application process that we're going to go through with any of this if we don't receive any of the money? Or if we receive some of the money, can we pare back the proposal that you've made in order to meet the amount of money that's actually received?
And, and yes, what they have said is they, as we talk to our regional offices, that they think that this is a fair and appropriate proposal, and they hope to be able to fund this, and they will have to wait until all funding applications are in. So they did a pretty thorough, I would say, a scope across all of our programs with an initial proposal that everyone put in just exactly how many slots that we would want to move to duration to meet the 45% benchmark at this time, and how much money did we think just preliminarily that would cost? And they looked at that and then put out this application. So they're, they're really hoping to fund everyone that has an appropriate application. So if they can't fund at all, they have talked about being able to fund partial, and they would just let us know what that is. We did prioritize just in case. It would be Lakeland, then Sandpoint, then Bonners Ferry, just based on community assessment data and interest and need, why we would choose one or over the other in case they can't fund the entire application.
And is this program intended to be an ongoing program?
It is, so it would add, so the legislature, a few years back, legislated that we go 100% 1,020 hours minimum, and that based on funding availability, they would, they would change those benchmarks of when we need to meet this qual, this requirement. If funding was not available, they do not want to see us lose slots by having to, you know, drop the, the number of children that we're serving so that we can come up with additional funding to go longer days. So they will, each year, they're looking at this to put out a new benchmark about, so we were supposed to be exam, for example, at 50% by this year, and they did not put out enough funding for that. So they, they moved that 50% benchmark, but the 100% by 2023 is still there in the legislation. So hopefully they'll keep funding it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trustee Howard?
You indicated that this application is due December 1?
Yes.
And our next meeting is November 28th. So will that be enough time for you to make the application if it is addressed and approved on the 28th, because it's not listed as an action item now?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I agree with your thought that maybe if you want it more of a, you don't want it that close.
Right.
I don't see any reason, because of the time crunch, we couldn't make it an action item. That would give you just a couple of days if you needed to make changes, track down trustees like myself for a signature. And so, board, if, if you're willing, maybe we should make this an action item so they can get their work done.
I don't know, under the new statute, can we change it?
On the agenda, it actually is listed as an action item, so you could, you could approve it, or if you wished.
Well, goodness, we need to pay better attention. I thought it was just a first reading.
First readings are convention, basically, for this board, but the agenda does keep it, or designated as an action item if the board chooses to do so.
So Chair Wood, we, we did that purposely for that occasion where we wouldn't want to limit ourselves if the board so chose that this would be an item that they wanted to make, take action on this evening. And, and you'll likely see more of those in the future where we give ourselves at least the option of taking action.
Great. Well, then, do I have a motion to approve the, I don't know about, we might as well just do it all, so she doesn't have to come back. The Headstart Policy Council bylaws and application for increased duration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, Beth Ann, and if there's something you need in between, don't hesitate to call Chris.
I do that very often, and I want to say how much I appreciate him very much, so.
So was that the bylaws or just the application?
Well, I lumped them all together. Your motion lumped them together. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our information items, tab three, Fall 2018 Enrollment Update. Grayden Stanley.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, guests, and friends, it's my pleasure to present to you the Fall 2018 Enrollment Report, joined again by my colleague and friend Diana Rents, who will present the numbers to you. Before we do that, I want to note that a report had been sent out to you in advance, so you should have had access to that information. What you'll see on the iPad tonight is simply a condensed reflection of some of the information that you received earlier. A reminder to you as well that our reporting period is now October 15th and March 15th for those semesters, so we've hit that date, and the numbers are compared to an October 15th date, that same reporting date last year. That's what you will see. I also, before Diana presents the numbers, I want to share with you that these are simply a reflection, really, of the work that everybody does almost every day year-round when we talk about recruitment, getting students here, retaining or completing. That's the work that we do all the time. And so while these numbers are important for you to see, I think it's even more important to recognize people and programs that support all of this, and why I certainly can't mention them by name, I want to just reflect upon a couple. You heard tonight, of course, from Dr. Amy Page on the work of the Cardinal Learning Commons. That certainly, as you will see, has huge impact on our retention and the numbers, and we suspect we'll, we'll improve those as we move forward. You had a report previously from Teresa Bornpole, and along with all her colleagues, faculty, and staff who did so, such great work last spring in taking our services out to the high schools, and have increased dramatically the number of applicants from the schools in Region One who chose NIC, and even more dramatically increased the yield, those number of students who applied and then chose to attend this fall. So that had dramatic impact as well. Jess Adams in front of me provides leadership to inside NIC, our orientation program that has hu, huge impact on student success, certainly during that, that first year. Dr. Larry Briggs and many others in the room have been a part of an initiative here to improve the advising work we do, collaborating among staff and faculty and doing a much better job intentionally advising our students here on campus, and these numbers are reflective of some great improvements that have been made along those lines. And I know I'm, I'm leaving some out along the way, but I just want to recognize, as much as these numbers are important, it's more important the work that all of our employees do every day to get these students here, to keep these students here, and to help them be successful. And before I give the, the numbers over to Diana, I also just want to note that in our budget setting process this last year, that was based on a 2.5% decrease. That's what we predicted. So the good news is, as you've watched these reports from month to month, you'll see that the numbers have improved. And in fact, we outperformed, just barely, but it's still outperformed with a 1.7 FTE decrease. And so we stayed within budget a little bit better than that, and is very comparable to what other institutions around the state and the region did. So we're grateful for all the efforts of our, our employees, and I'd love to have Diana present the numbers to you.
Thank you, Grayden. Board, Chair Wood, Dr. McLennan, guests, and community members, this is our Fall Enrollment Report, and I'm not going to tell you it's unofficial because it is official. These are our Fall Census numbers as of October 15th. You can see that we do have a slight decrease in our credit enrollment and FTE, which, if you can see at the bottom of those slides there, those green bars are head count, and those FTE are full-time equivalency. So as Grayden said, these numbers are, are down a bit from last year, but still within what we had budgeted for. Our full-time and part-time for credit enrollment, full-time numbers are on the decline over the last five years. Part-time numbers are increasing, but I will say that within our dataset, we can see that this decline is not significant in terms of the average number of credits that students are taking. Continuing new and returning students trends, taking a look at students who are continuing, new to NIC, returning, these returning students have been out for at least one year. And so we're trying actually, you can see that gradual decrease of the green line there at the bottom, and that's a good thing because that means that we're retaining more of those students rather than them stopping out for extended periods of time. Fall enrollment trend, we did take a look at a similar chart in our last board meeting, again, looking at head count in the blue line at the top and FTE in the red at the bottom. And I, I, you can see the bubble in the time period in which there was a recession nationwide and kind of returning to a normalized trend here. Academic programs for credit enrollment, academic transfer programs, down around 5% head count and FTE, and also career technical for credit, again, down a little bit there, head count and FTE. And dual credit enrollment continues to increase. And so this is kind of the, the final picture for the fall semester of 2018. Any questions?
Trustee Howard?
When we go back to the full-time, part-time chart for credit enrollment, does that part-time include dual credits?
It does. Yes, it does. And, and that might be part of the reason for that, you know, continued kind of increase of the part-time. That absolutely does include dual students. It's, I wouldn't have the number off the top of my head, but I would say it's exceptionally rare, if not. but I would say it's exceptionally rare, if not never happens, that a dual student would be enrolled full-time. That's just as unreasonable since they're in their high school classes still, so.
I just, that, one, one dimension to that dual enrollment. In two thousand fourteen, dual enrollment students made up, um, just under thirteen percent of our total student population. Uh, this year, this fall, they make up almost twenty-seven percent of our total student population. And so the trend has been, yeah, it's just been steadily on the increase. And we really don't, you know, we keep thinking, well, maybe we've leveled out here. But, and maybe we have, um, but it's continued to go up again. You saw that was it six percent or something like that? Yeah, six point seven percent in head count. So, um, that, that trend is continuing. And there, and there may be some concern, there will be some concerns with that. CSI, uh, just tipped over fifty percent of their student enrollment is dual enrollment students. And, and that's changing the whole nature of their campus.
Trustee Howard.
That comment makes me think that if we didn't include the dual credit students, which weren't here five years ago, that we would really have a dramatic decrease in our enrollment.
Uh, trustee Wood, uh, Chair Howard, that's true. And, and I think there's a bigger, more detailed data picture on that. Uh, one, one way of thinking about that is we've displaced enrollment, enrollment that we would have had after high school is now happening in high school. So it's, there's a, it's hard to know, uh, what number, percentage of those students would have been here to make up that enrollment. It wouldn't have been a one-for-one decline in, in, in that sense.
One other question on, I should know this by now, but after, every time I look at head count and FTE, I, I, I wonder which of those statistics impacts, um, tuition income? I mean, if we were to look, there, there are different numbers. So that, does the, does the FTE impact the, uh, tuition numbers more than the head count?
Kind of defer that to my colleague, Chris Martin.
Chair Wood, trustee Howard, the FTE number is what we base all the budget off of. And the FTE number is made up of, of fifteen credit hours. And so it all equates back to the credit hour, but we track everything by full-time equivalent.
So if we look at the full-time equivalent, that's not really very, that is very important with regard to our budgetary, um, evaluation.
Y- yes, sir.
Not the head count.
For the purposes of budget, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to continue, Diana? Or do you have any more? Oh, go ahead.
Chair Wood, trustees, I'd also like to just point out maybe a little tiny shining star that we think is, um, going to become bright in the near future. Uh, and give credit to, um, my colleague, Chris and Sarah Martin. Uh, about a year ago, we instituted, uh, a new initiative called Three for Free. And we were, did it as an incentive to, uh, have students take fifteen credits a semester rather than the traditional twelve, which is full-time. And we, uh, don't have data that would be statistically valid at this point because we've had o- only a limited opportunity to do this. But that initiative, we are seeing an amazing, um, participation rate by students in doing this, and, uh, their completion rate is remarkable as well. And so I am, I just leaned over to ask Chris if perchance, uh, part of our decrease in our part-time, uh, numbers could be attributed to it. And, you know, right now, we don't have the data to really, to draw that conclusion. But I would imagine in a couple of years, we will come back to you and be able to say that we think that this initiative, again, convincing students that if they take just an extra three credits, um, one, they get three credits in the next semester free. And secondly, it decreases their time to completion, that this will be, uh, an effective means of getting our students to completion. So just one, I didn't know whether you remember, remembered that we had instituted that and wanted to remind you of that. It's an important part in our whole, uh, strategies to retain and complete students here.
Great. Thank you. Board, any other questions? Any other that you wanted to add?
Thank you. That concludes our report.
Well, I just want to tell you real quick that I, um, I met a couple of students that, this week from Lakeland that are dual enrolled. Um, great, great kids, uh, football players, honor students, getting scholarships from other colleges. And, cause they play football, I tried to convince them to look at soccer and call Al and look at anything. But, um, you know, there are com- it was almost, it was very normal that the parents and the students said, yeah, we're dual enrolled. Of course, we're dual enrolled. And so that says a lot about NIC and the work that's been done to really show parents and students what an advantage it is, like Dr. McLennan said, to enroll early. You're here before your standard college years. And so I, I just think it's a, it's great work you've been doing. Thank you.
All right. That, uh, board chair report, well, I don't have a lot.
Integrated planning update, what is?
Oh, I thought, Diana, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's, that's quite right.
Ken, you're gonna have to do the agenda tonight.
We just want to give you a brief update on our planning efforts. Uh, this is, uh, dating back to, uh, eighteen months ago, well, probably two years ago, when the institution first began to cultivate efforts. And so just wanted to briefly update you on where we're, where we're standing there. Um, so, uh, we did identify an integrated strategic plan framework. Uh, based on the cultivate work of the la- of the, uh, prior eighteen months, there, uh, were revealed to be three major categories. People, places, and processes, access, completion, and transfer, workforce, and community engagement. Each of these, uh, three major categories has, uh, distinct objectives. And the access, completion, and transfer category, our three objectives are to provide integrated, informed, and aligned student experiences, streamline programs to shorten time to completion without compromising quality, and improve pathways to four-year institutions and job placement. Within the people, places, and processes category, our three objectives are to develop a culture of leadership, respect, and accountability throughout the organization, redesign, reinvent, and reset systems and processes to improve experiences and outcomes across the institution, and to develop a culture of interdepartmental collaboration and communication. In the, uh, major theme of workforce and community engagement, there are two objectives, to be the connection among students, employers, and our community, and to support and cultivate entrepreneurship and innovation. So in order to operationalize these objectives, these eight distinct objectives, we have formed three implementation teams, one for each of the major categories. These teams are cross-institutional and meeting regularly. Uh, currently, they are reviewing other plans such as the, uh, IT master plan, academic master plan, the strategic enrollment management plan, and the facilities master plan. Uh, they're also reviewing other research such as, uh, the education advisory board and, uh, other sources, um, that display best practices in higher education. Uh, from there, we will determine action items. Within these teams, uh, as I said, cross-institutional, uh, including a variety of staff, faculty members, uh, ensuring connection across the institution and, uh, also ensuring that there is a record kept of, uh, decisions made and action items. Uh, selected members, uh, this is clearly too small for you to see. I am realizing now, but, uh, there, these members have been selected, uh, some by their peers, by faculty and staff assembly, and some through, uh, president's cabinet instructional leadership team or others. Uh, I, I recognize that this, uh, writing is, is much too small for you to see, but I want you to get a feel for, uh, a, an alignment crosswalk that we have initiated. Uh, integrated strategic plan, uh, objectives are up at the top. And, uh, the, uh, strategic enrollment management plan is along the edge in blue. Uh, academic master plan starts in pink below. So we will, uh, have a full crosswalk of how the integrated strategic plan objectives align with other plans on campus. Next steps will be to finalize that crosswalk that I, uh, just showed you, which, by the way, I do have to give full credit to, uh, Amy Page, whom you just heard from. Uh, not only is she, um, making some great things happen in the Cardinal Learning Commons, but also is really taking initiative, uh, with this effort. Uh, she, uh, designed our, our alignment crosswalk. And, uh, we will be determining additional necessary actions in addition to those existing plans, prioritizing all of the action items, identifying lead individuals and groups, and determining timelines and measures of success. We hope that we can update you, uh, further as we continue our work in this area. Uh, final timelines that we're hoping to meet. Uh, we hope to have a completed, uh, plan presented to PC, president's cabinet in December. Uh, the integrated strategic plan will then be presented to the campus community in January. Action items will be tracked beginning in spring twenty nineteen and regular progress updates with assessments beginning in fall twenty nineteen. I have been told that this plan is ambitious, but that's what I was hired to do. So. So, uh, any questions, concerns, comments?
Board, any questions for Diana?
You, you know, you've kept us, uh, our workshop spoke to this and you, and thank you for the update. And I assume you're going to continue to provide updates. And, and maybe some of that paperwork you, that you had up there, if you want to send it out to us through Shannon, we're happy to look at it.
I absolutely would love to do so. Uh, if, if the board is, uh, approves of this plan, I would like to complete the crosswalk first so that all of those check marks are, are marked into, so that you can then see the alignment. Right now, it is, um, it is just a, a framework. But, uh, once it is completed, I would love to share with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Well, just real quick, under the board chair report, um, Lita, can you tell us about the books? That's, I, thank you. Thank you.
Those, uh, the, the book you have in front of you is our new Cardinal Read, um, book that we are, uh, starting on this academic year and will use for two years. And so we hope that you will take it and read it. It's, uh, a very interesting book and, uh, describes very well how people work together and, uh, and work communally. So I hope that you enjoy that. And I hope you are able to participate in some of our seminars and workshops on the Cardinal Read.
Okay. It's called Tribe on Homecoming and Belonging by Sebastian Junger. And then Designing Your Life, who gave this to us?
That came from the Cardinal Learning Commons. That's actually only for you to review, then we will need them back, so, uh, for our students. But we, we wanted you to see kind of what the, uh, materials for the syllabus and those two courses are, are designed on.
Okay. So when do you want this back?
Right now.
We haven't even looked at it.
We'll take it back, you know, whenever you're done, in, in a month or so.
Okay.
Yeah. Whenever you get finished with them.
Okay. Um, I don't have a lot for board chair report except to say I hope you all get home in time for a little bit of candy. My husband will probably have it all gone by the time I get there. Did he go trick- no, he pretends to hand it out, some for him, some for them. Um, but, uh, we won't meet again until after Thanksgiving. And so I hope all of you have a great holiday. And once again, eat lots of food. And we'll see you back here the end of November. Board, any reports for good of the order? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.